I'd like to welcome to Albany City Council Work Session, Monday, November 29th at 4:00 P. M. Thank you very much for attending this evening. Let's go ahead and call the major order and we have roll call, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Alex Johnson, the second.
Here.
Councillors Olson.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Bartholomew.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
And Smith. Five councillors present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Like I said earlier, councillor Smith will be joining us hopefully before the meeting's over. I'm gonna go ahead and business from the public. Persons wanting to address the council during business from the public and will provide written materials for the public record must register to speak and attach the materials at the city's website. That's when the address has been applied before noon on the day of the meeting. So zones, I was informed that no one has applied or submitted written materials, so we'll have none of that tonight. Councillor Smith is coming in, so it's good to see her come in. Before we get started with the next topic, the city manager would like to do some introductions and kind of bring us up to speed on what we're doing this evening. Peter?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon to you and to the councillors. There's a quote that's attributed sometimes to Alice in Wonderland and sometimes to Yogi Berra, both of whom are solid philosophers in their own right. And you've probably heard it before. If you don't know where you're going, any road will take you there. I think we can all intuitively understand also Tom Friedman, who's the noted author and New York Times columnist, who's quoted as saying, "A vision without resources is an hallucination." But if you, what if you flip that around? What are resources without vision? I've heard many say that resources without vision is chaos or aimless wandering and certainly potentially waste. So you, as councillors, form the governing body of a multimillion dollar corporation. You're the board of directors of this organization. All organizations are unique and the city of Albany is no exception. But every board of directors has some of the same basic fundamental responsibilities. As organizations grow and evolve and the world in which the organization operates grows and changes, the board is responsible for reviewing the changes and making adjustments that are in the best interests of the organization. The basic responsibilities of a board include establishing a vision, mission and purpose and creating a strategic plan and ensuring that that plan is followed. Looking to the future is a fundamental responsibility of the board. We today are living with the effects both good and bad of decisions made 10, 15, 20 years ago. Sometimes we're living with the effects of indecision or the failure to plan for the future. Similarly, people 10, 15, 20 years from today will be living with the decisions made by this council and the direction charted by this council. Strategic planning has been defined as a systematic process by which a community anticipates and plans for its future. We have a good strategic plan right now. It has served the city well, but no plan can be expected to be fresh forever or even applicable forever. In fact, one army general once said that no plan survives first contact with the enemy. This is a natural outgrowth of the fact that no one can accurately predict the future, but it doesn't negate the importance of planning. The tendency for plans to become dated as soon as they're published has led to the saying that plans are useless, but planning is essential. The city needs its council to take a look at its strategic plan and to go through that systematic process, even if the resulting changes are limited. So, as I've talked to each of you, we have a full day set aside for goal setting coming up in January. On January 15th, a Saturday, we'll get together in the council chambers. We're not calling it a retreat. We're not going to travel to a nice remote site, but it will be a chance to set aside what I call the tyranny of the moment and set or confirm goals for the future. To help us, we've engaged Sarah Singer-Wilson. And Sarah has grown up, if you want to use that euphemism, in the world of city management, serving as assistant to the city manager in Shawnee, Kansas, as a senior administrative analyst in the city of Rancho Palos Verdes in California, which we used to call RPV when I grew up there, and as deputy city manager in the city of Tuolton, Oregon. Her experience as a consultant to local governments began when she was vice president for J. Robertson and Company, a strategic planning and public communications firm in Olympia, in the state to the north of us. And I don't know if every good consultant does this, but Sarah was so successful that she saw the challenge of starting her own business and she started SSW Consulting in 2017. Sarah has helped many Oregon cities and is also very involved in helping the Northwest Women's Leadership Academy. We're fortunate to have her on board to help us with this effort, to guide us through it. And as her website says, Sarah is used to helping organizations take the stress out of the strategy development process. So council and mayor, please welcome Sarah Singer-Wilson and Ashley Sonoff, also of SSW. And Sarah, let me turn it over to you at this point.
Thank you, Peter, for that very kind introduction. I'm so pleased to be with the mayor and council tonight and the Albany team to kick off our work on the update of your strategic plan and more urgently to get prepped for the council goal setting workshop that's going to happen in January. So I'd like to just share a few slides with you. Well, first I'll talk a little, so tonight we're gonna talk about, share a little bit more about our firm, talk about the strategic planning process itself and then the council goal setting process and what you can expect for that. And then we want to leave some time, most of our time at the end to map out some of the outcomes that you all hope to see for the strategic planning process. Talk through some of those challenges and opportunities we might encounter along the way and then also talk about what your goals are for community engagement in this work and how you'd like to engage with the Albany community as part of this process. So I'll just start by, Peter already shared some of my local government experience, but a few. I've been working in local government since, really since I was in college. So it's been well over, well over 20 years now, but starting with my very first internship. So before I made my way to Kansas, I worked, I grew up in the St. Louis metro area in Missouri and worked for a local government there. And while I was in the Kansas City metro, I went to college at Benedictine College in Atchison, Kansas and then onward to KU for my masters in public administration. So while doing that work, I interned for several different cities in the Kansas City metro and then that's where I landed in the city of Shawnee for for some time before making my way to the West Coast. And anyhow, it's just been a really fulfilling career in public service. I've worked in all sizes of cities and have just really enjoyed this work in community engagement, strategic planning and then helping take that work with the public, with elected officials and help organizations figure out how to translate that into goals for their departments. And so I really have a great understanding of the inner workings of local government and a real passion for helping communities set their goals and really bring them to life. So that's a little bit about me. I'm based in Portland now and live here in southwest Portland with my husband, my new daughter, who's three months old and two giant Newfoundland. So I have 300 pounds of dog. We're big animal lovers over here. So that's a little bit about me. And Ashley, if you want to go ahead and introduce yourself, she's an associate with SSW Consulting and will be part of the team on this project. And so you guys will have some interface with her as well. So glad she could join us tonight.
Hi, everyone. Mayor, council, thank you so much for having us tonight. We're happy to be here. It's nice to see all of your faces and look forward to working with you more in January. Like Sarah said, my name is Ashley Sonoff and I'm part of the SSW consulting team. I'm an associate with Sarah and I've spent the last 12 years working with organizations of all shapes and sizes from the for-profit and business sector to nonprofit world with international development organizations. And then most recently, that's what led me to pursue my masters of public administration from the University of Washington and really opened my eyes to the world of local government and public service. So since getting my master's degree in public administration, I've worked for the city of Seattle in their Parks and Recreation Department, but also in their city budget office, working on performance management initiatives headed up by the mayor. So big, big organization. From there, I came down to Oregon and worked at the city of Gresham for three years as an analyst and did a lot of work with their organizations, starting a data and analytics strategic plan program, basically a way to use all of the data and information that the city's already collecting on a daily basis and then use that to identify trends and understand where the city's resources are going, both financial resources and people resources as well and, you know, capital, capital projects too, and figuring out how we can do the most with what we have. And so everyone knows in government, we are good stewards of the public dollar. And so that was the motto of my work in Gresham, was trying to do the most, the best service that we could for the community, the most efficiently as possible. And then after the city of Gresham, I came over to the city of Lake Oswego, back to Parks and Recreation Department, where I worked in sponsorship and business, a business development within the Parks and Recreation Department. And so even just in the local government sphere, I've been working for big, big organizations like Seattle and then kind of a mid-range like Gresham and then a smaller like Lake Oswego. But like Sarah said, I have a deep passion for public service. It's where my heart is and I'm so fortunate to be working with Sarah in this strategic planning work. Something that I love so much about the strategic planning process and Peter explained it so eloquently before, but it's just, it's a really wonderful opportunity to assess where you've come, celebrate where you've been and think about the future and think about what the priorities are. With strategic planning, it's an exciting time because we can, you can do anything, but there are decisions to be made because you can do anything, but you can't do everything. And so I really love to dig into those conversations and I'm looking forward to working with you all. And I wanted to share a fun fact about me as well. I had two, two small kids and my daughter loves carousels. And so every time we go to the Portland, the Oregon Zoo, she always wants to ride the carousel. And so my husband and I have been wanting to plan a trip down to Albany to check out the historic carousel because I think it's gonna just rock her world. So so we're looking forward to that. And I don't have as much a dog in my house as Sarah, but I have a 35 pound labradoodle and he, but he's got a lot of personality. And so anyway, so that's a little bit about me. Look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley. So I'm gonna share my screen, just finish our introductions and then get into the meat of our conversation here. So let's transition there. All right. Can you all see that? Okay, good. So we already talked about our presentation. So a little bit about our firm. And again, we already shared our deep passion for for public service, but the why behind why, why I started this firm and again, why I love this work is communities and organizations are where we spend our lives. Oh, sorry, is there?
We see your notes page.
Oh. Shoot, let me see if I can swap this. Did we get it?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Community and organizations, that's where we spend our lives and we believe that they should be supportive, inclusive and provide systems where we can thrive and plans help us, help us to get there. We, the values that guide our work are creativity. You'll notice, you'll see some of this come to light in the presentation and in our discussion here in a bit, but I specialize in graphic facilitation. So I, people think and imagine all different ways. And so in, in order to help engage folks, I think that visual, visuals really help us to see the bigger picture and visualize where it is that we're going. So I bring a lot of creativity in the realm of graphic facilitation into my work. Emotional intelligence, again, being able to connect with the folks who are part of these organizations and these communities. People come first, people of all walks of life. We're adaptable. We always have to shift and evolve based on the communities we're working in. This isn't a one size fits all approach in strategic planning. So really trying to figure out how we can best serve your community. We provide leadership in this process and really, you know, try to help communities solve some of the problems that that they're facing with creative solutions. So those are the values that guide our work. Strategic planning, Peter did a very eloquent job of explaining what it is, but it's really uniting folks towards a clear future, mapping out, you know, where it is that we want to go and, and coming together around that. Facilitation, that piece of it is helping to foster those relationships that will get that work done. So once we've decided the path, we've picked our vision, we've got our goals lined out. We've, we want to make sure that those relationships exist to help make that actionable. And so through the facilitation process, we try to help build some of those relationships, whether it's relationships amongst your fellow councillors, relationships with staff or relationships within your community, with community partners or residents or businesses, whoever that may be. It's really important to have those strong relationships if we're gonna see those goals become actionable. Just a little bit of, or I guess a few, a short list of our clients from just the past couple of years, but lots of, we've done lots of work throughout Oregon and more and more in Washington and even branching beyond that. Now that we're in this virtual environment, you can work anywhere. And so I find myself getting contacted by cities all over the place, but it's really been a lot of fun and we bring the same passion and energy to all of these communities. And the benefit of all this local government experience is that we learn all sorts of things along the way. Again, as I mentioned, there's no one size fits all approach and every community teaches us new lessons as we dig it and we try to bring that experience and expertise into whatever new communities we're working in. So looking forward to trying to share some of those examples if, if there are good ones to be shared with Albany. So a little bit about the strategic planning process. So again, it's define goals and actions to drive your vision forward in alignment with mission and values and then coming up with a plan to help you get there. We really want to focus on the engagement of the organization and the community so that you end up with unity around your mission, your vision, your values, your goals. Make sure that those goals are shared goals that we came to through collaborative discussion and, and make, you know, we want to make sure that there's lots of engagement in, in getting to those goals to make sure that we've got plenty of buy-in and are ready to turn them into action once we finalize that plan. And then making sure that this last one, this last bullet here is important because we want to make sure that there's alignment between the various plans that guide both your organization and the community. So we know that cities have lots of plans. You have capital improvement plans. You have your budget. That's one of your most important planning documents. Different departments may have different plans. You have transportation plans, urban renewal plans. So we want to try to, through the strategic planning process, make sense of all of these things and be able to highlight where, where there's alignment between these plans so that, and the important piece of this is that that way you can communicate both to the organization and the community where it is that you're headed because it can get really confusing. And so we want to try to make sure that there's clear alignment and so that we can clearly communicate what's happening. So as we've been working with, with the city staff, we've outlined some goals for this work. So the first piece of this, the first goal is to facilitate a goal setting workshop and not a retreat. Some people like to call it an advance or workshop. So moving forward, head it, head it towards new goals, but we want to work with the council to set some goals that will align ultimately with that citywide strategic plan. We want to identify and communicate, as I mentioned, the alignment of the city citizen survey, the strategic plan, the council goals, the city's biennial budget. So we want to make sure that it's clear how these things all align and cascade into one another. As, after we get through this goal setting workshop, we'll further define the strategic planning calendar and make sure that we provide some ongoing support for the city's strategic planning process. And finally, as I mentioned, through all of the engagement that we're going to do throughout this project, process, we want to make sure that we're building a collaborative and a cohesive team. We know that there's some newer councillors on the team. You guys have some new leadership within the city organization. And so this is an amazing opportunity to really build a collaborative and a cohesive team as we work through this process and do all of this engagement together. So those are some goals that we've set with staff. As far as the goal setting workshop piece of this, I just want to take you through, this is at a high level, the process that we'll undertake. And again, I'm going to be doing some outreach with all of you and we'll talk about that here in a moment. But to further define what our process is going to look like, but at a high level, the first thing we want to do is set the intention and be really intentional about where it is that we're headed, why we're doing it. The second piece of the goal setting process will be to align with the city's vision. And, and part of that may be defining the vision and, and, you know, talking about what, what's the shared vision for Albany five, 10 years out and having some conversations and doing some exercises around that. The third piece of this is we really want to set the tone for success. Cities have been just inundated for almost the last two years now. We were saying the last year and then it was like the last 18 months and now now we're closing in on two years here of things, it just really challenging times. But through those challenges, we've seen a lot of success and a lot of shifts in how cities do business and how we respond. And so we want to make sure that we look back, we reflect and we celebrate on some of that. The fourth piece of our work in this process will be to think about what's the context, what's the environment that we're currently operating in. And we want to make sure we have a shared understanding of what that context is so that we can set goals that appropriately are responsive to it. And, you know, thinking through what are the challenges and opportunities that we need to be thinking about as we goal set. So after we get through that contextual review, then we'll start doing the brainstorming and the ideation phase and gathering up all of those ideas. So working with the council, working with staff will get those ideas mapped out. And then through that process, I've never, I've never, I guess, never not seen it be successful. It's two negatives in a row, but I've always, I guess I should say, I've always seen it be successful and seeing some themes emerge from that ideation process. And so with those themes, we'll start to see the goals take shape. And the next piece of it will be to dig in a little deeper, refining those goals, thinking about what are the actions that might support making them happen. And then the last piece will be to make a plan. How are we gonna make these goals come to life? How are we going to align those with resources? So it's more than just a plan and that it's, it's, you're gonna see them shift into reality when paired with some resources. So at a high level, that's the goal setting process that we'll undertake. But looking forward to the outreach that I'm gonna do with the council and with staff to hear, you know, how, how we can customize this process to really fit the needs of the Albany organization and community. So to give you an idea of the timeline that we've set, so right now we're finishing this, the scoping planning piece. I already started a little bit of the outreach today. I had a couple of interviews with some of the staff members, some of the department heads and we'll continue that outreach with both the council and the department heads December into, into January. January, we'll start getting prepped for the workshop and we've got that workshop set on for January 15th. So as part of the preparation, I'll be sharing the summary of the outreach that we conducted. So just the major themes that we heard, you know, wherever there was alignment around challenges or opportunities, we'll get an agenda set based on what we heard, your desired outcomes and set up some activities for that workshop. And so I try to make sure that everything's really clear and everybody knows what their role is. Everybody knows what our game plan is for the day because there's a lot of resources that go into this one day workshop and we want to make sure that we are set up for success. So if there's, if at any time in the process you feel lost or you're unclear about something, I want you to please feel free to reach out to me or to city staff and, and let's get those questions answered so that we can be as successful as possible when we come together on January 15th. After the 15th, we will put together a summary report of your council goals and an action plan and to make sure that it's really clear how these things are gonna move forward and tie into, into the budget process or into the budget. And then in March, so that'll be, the council goals will be that shorter term look. So looking at the next couple of years, but then in March, we'll have at that point a defined process for what the strategic plan development's going to look like and a timeline for those next steps. So this is what you can expect for the council goal setting process. And I want to just pause here and see if there are any questions so far before we get into our discussion about the strategic plan about just the council goal setting. I'm gonna stop, share here for a moment. Yeah.
Yes, it's way too early in the process to actually have a decision on it, but I'm wondering, how do you, it's two-phase question. How do you measure your success with working with each individually completely different communities? And how should we use, what should we use as a metric for success when this all finishes up?
That's a great question. I think I, as far as metrics for success or how do I measure success? At the outset of each of these projects, we set a list of desired goals and outcomes. And so I try to track along the way, are we meeting those and check in with the project team? As far as the council's success, again, I've seen different elected groups want different outcomes at the end. Some are, you know, trying to really zoom out and look for a vision. Some cities have just been struggling and trying to just set some really specific goals and give solid direction to staff. Some, some groups want all of that. And so that's why we do these, that's why we do this outreach here at the onset to figure out as a, as a team, as an elected group of, group of officials, how do you guys, what are the outcomes that you hope to see? And that's how we'll figure out what, how we're gonna be successful and set some metrics around that.
Councillor, that satisfactory, councillor Kupczynski. Councillor Novak was next.
Thank you. I'm curious as to the cost of the consultation. Can I get some information on that?
The city manager will be writing that to us.
Yes, councillor Novak, I will answer any questions you have about cost and, and budget and implications for, for both.
Is that going to be before we, at what point can I expect that conversation?
Oh, I've already, I've already put in a request for that information. So as soon as I get that, I'll get that to you.
I would have liked to have that before we even sat down, just for what it's worth. I don't mean to make anybody's life hard, but with things like this, I, I would have hoped that information would have been before we even sat down to discuss it.
Well, actually, that's, that's delving into the little nuts and bolts that, you know, you, what you, what you provide us or you provide direction is to, to come up with a direction for the city using your, you know, your decisions and your input based on the people that you represent. So trying, you know, trying to delve into the cost of individual trying, you know, trying to delve into the cost of individual contract amounts is, is probably a little bit into the weeds, but that is certainly something we can get for you and I will get for you. I just.
I, I'm, maybe I'm not being clear. Forgive me if I'm not phrasing it properly. I'm not quite a hundred percent, but, um, I'm, I'm speaking with regard to SSW, the consultation group, what, what the city is investing in this consultation, both now today, this presentation and in January and whatever follow up and all that. I, I would like to know, um, what we're paying for this and where the money is coming from.
Sure. And I'll, I'll get that information for you.
Any other questions, council? Okay, go ahead and continue. Oh, Counselor Bartholomew.
Um, yes, I noticed that it said that you've had a core strengths training here in Albany. Is that correct? Albany, Oregon?
Yes, um, we did some work with, uh, a couple of your teams. Gosh, I guess it's been two, well, last year, last year we did one and then, uh, two years ago. And, um, that's one of the other services that I offer is team building services. I've used this tool with some, uh, some councils as well and, um, and then sometimes internally, but it's a great, it's a great development tool where uh, people can learn about the strengths they bring to, um, to their team, maybe some of their overdone strengths, uh, as well as conflict styles and figuring out, um, what motivates folks. And, and where, and it really just helps you learn about the dynamic of your team as well as yourselves as individuals and how to best leverage those strengths and motivations um, to achieve the results that you want to achieve. So, yeah, we had some good, good success with, uh, some of your departments a couple of years back.
Thank you.
Connection's terrible.
Can you guys, can everyone hear me? Okay. Um, well, if, are there any other questions that I can answer about the, the process, the goal setting process? Before we talk more about strategic planning?
I don't see any other hands.
Okay. Great. Well, I just want to say that council goals are really important. They can help set the tone for the year. And, um, councils elected to represent all the interests of the community. And this is a time to bring those voices forward and to share your priorities. So, um, I'm really looking forward to this work. I'm always, always fascinated to see how the process comes together with all the different parties involved. And um, I've just seen it be really successful. I have a lot of repeat clients like the city of Hillsborough, city of Hermiston, we're going into our seventh year. And what's really cool about working with cities year after year is you, is you can, thinking back to the, the other question about metrics of success is that you can really see some of these goals come to fruition. And when you can, when you can unite around some shared goals, it's really amazing to see what communities can accomplish together. So looking forward to see, uh, seeing what the city of Albany had, what your intentions are for, for the vision for your community and the goals ahead and, um, and how we can move those things forward. So I'm going to do, uh, this next piece is going to be a kind of an interactive conversation. I use this tool. Uh, it's a visual whiteboarding tool called mural. And I'm going to chart some of your responses on, on the mural board and we'll kind of go back and forth, but so I will share my screen in just a moment. But the first question I have for the council uh, to consider and to have some discussion around is thinking about the strategic planning process. So, um, again, we want to develop a vision, set some long-term goals. Um, thinking about that process, what outcomes do you hope to see as a result of that? And so I just want to open that up for, uh, discussion amongst the council as far as shared outcomes for the strategic planning process. Any, um, any thoughts on what you all like to see on that? Yeah, Counselor Kupinski is, am I pronouncing that?
This is a question.
Yes.
Okay.
Very close, very close. Uh, I hope to, uh, end up with a plan down the road that is, you know, multi-year and that is something that is, has some reach in it, but is achievable. And the only way to do that from my background is that the goals have to be measurable. Um, rather than just nibbling around the edges. If there are some checkpoints that maybe every six months, I don't know, every quarter, however that we define that. But as long as we're achieving those goals, then I can say the plan is working. Uh, if we don't have measurable goals, then I think, uh, we're just, you know, uh, basically flying blind. So I'll leave it at that.
All right. Excellent. Thank you.
The counselor Smith.
Thank you. Uh, I have a couple of things. I, I would like to start with a thorough review of the strategic plan that we have been operating with and updating um, for several, well, back to 2007, I think. Um, take a look at that, see what's working and if anything needs to be changed. And then, uh, do some basic list making of, as Counselor Kopczynski said, achievable to-dos. Um, we can, I, I'm thinking of three categories, practical, practical, uh, goals for things that we can take care of in fairly short order. Um, sustain, uh, sustainable goals or goals related to sustainability for anything that we, we set as a goal. Can we, can we keep that up? Um, and then aspirational, an aspirational list. If, if I had all the money in the world or if I was king, I would do this. Uh, I, I, it's nice to have dreams written down on paper, uh, because sometimes they come true.
Right. Thank you.
Um, I would like to add, I'd like our strategic plan to be multi-generational. Um, cause right now we're making decisions for my grandchildren and other people's grandchildren. And, uh, you know, until recently, I've seen, uh, we're doing outreach with young people nowadays and getting more of the, we have, you know, all generations, seniors, middle, middle age, the younger professionals, young families, and then even at the high school level, because they're watching. After 2020, more and more young people are, are watching the city government and our local federal governments. And so multi-generational would be really something to be, I'd like to see. Um, I studied city councils from around the world when I first, when Counselor Chopcinski first wrote me into this thing. And, um, I looked at several villages and cities in Japan. And they would bring in one of my, I'm still trying to find my links for that, but they would bring in the youngest grandchild of oldest counselor and oldest grandchild of the oldest counselor, the youngest counselor. And they'd form a committee and then, and they would contribute to discussions like this. You know, some of the, some of the stuff was outlandish, but a lot of it was really important and it was good data to have.
Excellent. That's a great idea. Thank you. Other thoughts on strategic planning outcomes? Who, who have we not heard from yet? I want to make sure everybody's voices are represented here. Any of the other counselors want to comment on that?
You will call you out, right?
I know, I know. I, I, I was expecting it. I, you know, I really don't know is, you know, you say the strategic plan. Okay. So we have this piece of paper document that says, okay, these were our goals and whatever. Did we hit them or whatever? I'm not really sure what I'm expecting, um, because we can set all kinds of goals, but if we don't have the money to do it, then I, I don't know. It's a, I'll be anxious to see what, um, SWS could do, SSW, excuse me, got it wrong. And I looked right at your name too. But yeah, to see where we're going to go with this. I mean, I have my interview tomorrow and I'm thinking, okay, I've copied the questions. I don't know the answer to any of them, so I gotta do some studying before tomorrow. Like, what do I think? So, you know, I think this is one of the hardest things for any council to do. Because, you know, like, um, like Marilyn said, you know, um, achievable and dreams. I think both of them are, uh, nothing is wrong. Yeah. I mean, with that, because maybe something will happen that you come into some money and you can do a dream, you know, I have a dream. So, um, I'm not exactly sure what I'm expecting, but I'm open to anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. I just want to respond to, to something that you said, and maybe this will um, inspire any other thoughts that you guys might have regarding outcomes. But one of the things that is so valuable about strategic planning and council goal setting, again, as when Peter did the introduction, you all serve as the, the guiding, the policymakers for this organization. And so that organization, those people, over 400 employees, I believe in the city of Albany are looking to you for direction. And so again, they can, they can make anything happen, but they need to know what the direction is. And so see this process as an opportunity to really define that direction. I mean, you think of your budget and the millions of dollars that, that are in there, it could be spent any which way. And so this is an opportunity to really say, this is our, this is our vision. These are our priorities. This is how we want staff to, to spend those resources and to, to work towards these things. And so that's, yes, we want it to be achievable, achievable, and then also give you the opportunity to think long range and think visionary. So that's, that's really the value of a process like this. And, um, and it gives great direction to your organization so that they know what this, what this body wants. All right. A few others I know that we haven't heard from. Want to make sure that, that we have everybody's thoughts in this, as before we move forward. Yeah, it looks like there's a hand up from Counselor Novak.
Yes, with regard to, uh, you just mentioned the budget, for instance, and I know you're planning on doing outreach. I would love to see the people that we as counselors appointed to our budget committee. I would like to get input from them because I look to the people that we put on our citizens advisory groups. I look to them for their input. I, there's a lot of things that I, I'm not the most knowledgeable, but I have put people on various committees specifically because of their knowledge in specific areas. And so I would hope that if we are going to strategically plan and look at everything, and if we're going to look at our budget, I would hope that we will include the individuals that, um, some of whom I'm looking to for their wisdom and understanding of budgets. I, I would hope that we can include their input. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent input. Um, all right. Other thoughts on outcomes?
I don't see any other hands.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor. Let's go ahead and move to the next question here. Any challenges, uh, that you see going into this process? That we should, again, we talk about challenges and opportunities and challenges specifically because we want to make sure that we're managing for those things and so that we can, we can overcome them and, and plan for, for any bumps in the road we might run into. So do you guys anticipate any challenges with this process? As we've discussed so far?
Counselor Smith, Counselor Johnson.
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, the most, most difficult thing is we have seven people and seven different ideas. So it's going to be interesting, you know, uh, hopefully we can come to some sort of consensus, which is what we all try to work toward. But, uh, you know, everyone has their own minds and, and thoughts. So, uh, that'll be an interesting one, I think.
Thank you.
Okay.
Counselor.
Yes. Okay. Let's take my hand down then. Uh, along the lines of what, uh, Counselor Johnson just mentioned, uh, none of us came to this position thinking that we were going to dream at night how we can screw up the city of Albany. We all bring different passions to it. Uh, I wouldn't have it any other way. Uh, by the same token, one of the first counselors that I happened to sit next to, uh, years ago, uh, said, uh, gave me some very astute advice. He said, break, try and always think of ways, how can we get to yes? You knowing full well that we're never going to get a hundred percent of our way, uh, which is a, a, a nice way of saying compromise is not a dirty word. So I think that's apropos all the way down the road. So as long as we can keep thinking how, how we can get to yes, we'll come up with a better community all the way around.
Yes, agreed. Thank you. Other thoughts on challenges that we might encounter along the way?
I, I think Counselor Smith.
This is the elephant in the room. Um, there, we've been through, well, I've been around for a long time and I hate to throw the history card in, but, um, the council has not had, uh, a really focused goal setting session for a long time because of, um, differing views among counselors that it wasn't necessary. And we have work to do, but we don't need to do this. We'd, let's just get it. Let's just go for it. Um, and that goes way back. Um, I'm, I hope that we can move beyond that and realize that planning is valuable. And I mean, that's starting from ground zero here, but sometimes that's necessary. It, and I, I'd like to see um, everybody come into it with an open mind and, um, a personal goal of cooperation and, um, uh, team building.
So go ahead, city manager. Thank you, Marilyn. We got this, Smith.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to make a point with respect to what Counselor Smith just said. Um, in the past, I, I, I do think that the council put a lot of trust in their staff. And that is something that I, as a manager, really appreciate. And we will, as Sarah mentioned, do whatever we can to affect whatever the council's direction is. But the difference between the council and the staff is that the council are elected. Uh, you do actually represent the people of the city of Albany. So in a sense, while I do appreciate the trust you put in us and we are certainly able and happy to help with council's development of goals and, uh, and strategies and, and priorities. It really comes down to the seven members who were elected by the people of Albany to determine the future of, of the city. So it's, it is something that only, only the council can do. And even if it comes down to taking a good look at the existing strategic plan and verifying or reconfirming much of what's in there, that's fine. I, I wouldn't be surprised at that at all. But further to what Counselor Smith said, it does need to be the council that does take a look at this and, um, gives it a good once-over.
I, I, I think, so for me, I think some of the challenges we're going to run into is time. Um, a lot of, a lot of us are busy. A lot of us have jobs and, you know, businesses to run. And so finding the optimal time to dedicate the time to do this. Other thing is, is that, uh, with a, without right now, a a council that's been together for a long period of time, we're still learning to work with each other as well. So I, I think getting that relationship moved further along is going to be very beneficial. And through this open and honest discussion about the vision, what there's, what other people are thinking, uh, and being able to listen, actively listen to each other. I think it's really important.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Um, one challenge I see is that we may, uh, not, uh, challenge what's currently there. Um, and just nibble at it instead of really look at, is this what we want to continue to have? Vision goals.
Yes, that, that is the challenge. But I think, as I mentioned, through that context mapping piece, it's going to force us to look at what the current environment is. And, and, and then look at that up against what your current goals may have been. And I think that you'll see some opportunities to shift because the world has changed. Again, I do this work with so many cities and I've seen so much evolution just over the last couple of years as cities have had to, and communities have had to respond to so many new challenges that have come up. So the timing of, of Albany doing this work is, is really ideal. While it may feel like it's been challenging times, it really opens, um, opens the door for lots of opportunities, which is a good transition into the second part of this question, which is what, what opportunities do you all see? Or should we be thinking about and leveraging as we, as we go into this process?
Counselor Smith.
I see an opportunity for us to get to know each other better. We took, uh, we took office in January. We have met in person together three times. We've been meeting on Zoom. And I, I, it will be, uh, be an opportunity to be in the same room for a change. That could help.
Absolutely. Thank you.
To Novak.
Yes, as Counselor Smith. Yes, as Counselor Smith mentioned earlier, I think that. It is a good opportunity to review the plan that's been around since two thousand and seven. I don't think, I know that didn't happen last year, last year, we had a rundown from all the different departments on, in. January, all the departments presented information, and it was for someone like me, whose brand spanking knew it was very helpful, but I. Very much feel like, i- if we're gonna do this, then reviewing what's in existence is, has got to be some kind of priority. And then we can jump from there, we can assess, you know, where has, where has the city met those goals and and, you know, where do we stand in relation? To, to that plan and and what are we going to do? With it from here out.
Thank you, Counselor Novak, Counselor Kaptansky.
Oh.
I can't hear you.
Thank you, keep me honest. Going forward, long range, I think that it's incumbent upon us and to develop. And utilize the opportunity that we have now to plan for. The increase in population that is going to be coming down the road. I mean, it's, it's happening. Year after year. The percentage increases, the people are coming, we're not going to be able to stop them, nor would I want to, however, we've got to be able to effectively plan. To allow them to be here, because they're going to be here. So how do we make that happen? And I think that's incumbent upon us to get our arms around that. More so than we already have right now.
Yes, thank you.
We haven't heard Counselor Olson yet. You have anything for us, Counselor Olson?
I wasn't gonna say anything, no. But I will. In the last forty years, I've served thirty years on this council. Twenty years ago, we developed what I thought was a really good urban renewal plan. Now, this got one that's right to the point where it can do something useful and good. This council is junking it. To dump all the money on, on a street project. And a park plan. Which will be the laughing stock of the state. When it gets finished up. So. I am not very optimistic about this planning session. I'm sorry to say.
Thank you for input, Counselor Olson. Go ahead, proceed, please.
Okay. Any other? Any other comments on challenges or opportunities? All right, well, just. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to address what Counselor Olson mentioned. I'm hoping that if we're gonna take a look at everything. That we can also. Reach out to the individuals who are our community advisors. And get their input. I I feel. More than a little bit badly that we've been denied input from these individuals. And I believe. They serve at the pleasure of the council. I want to hear from them. And I I want. Just, just as I would like input from the people on the budget committee when it comes to discussing our budget, I want input from the people. On the care board when it comes to discussing the plans that are currently in place. Thank you. I think it's only right.
I think the next segue is the community engagement, I think, that's where she's going. Am I correct?
You are absolutely correct, so that, that is a really good segue, we can just add. The city advisory boards. Do you guys call them boards? City advisory boards or committees?
Citizen advisory groups.
Citizen advisory groups, okay. As part of that engagement strategy, it's a great, great suggestion. And and make sure that we're engaging them at the onset. And other, as we think about community engagement, what are their goals or should we, should be set or? Things that you hope that will include or groups that you hope that we talk to, to make sure that. This plan is reflective of of the Albany community and is taking, is leveraging all of that expertise. And the great ideas. We heard from the mayor earlier about engaging youth and making sure it's multi-generational, so we can just go ahead and put that over here as well.
Not just youth, though, but I mean, every generation, I mean, we have people a hundred years old. Yeah, so Counselor Kaptansky has something.
Oh, Counsel, you're on mute again.
What I've always struggled with is how do you reach? The members of the community with the incredibly disparate means available to do that through all the quote unquote. Social media platforms, newspaper, radio, television, you know, you could spend. An incredible amount of money and not reach everybody. Trying to find an effective way to get people engaged. Because of my perception, a lot of times is that an awful lot of folks are. It's not that they don't want to get engaged, they're, for lack of a better description, are apathetic to getting engaged. And with. Sometimes, you know, when you volunteer to wear a target on your back, as we all do here. Some folks are scared off from getting engaged. And that's not right, I mean. We have to be able to address or talk to all of them and have ways to do so, and right now. I think we're only hitting a small portion of the community, but. Here we are, that's just my only. I guess I can, this could go into a rejection thing or a concern back on the very first.
Yeah, I've captured that as figuring out maybe where those engagement challenges are, and then we'll figure out some tools. That that might help to address it. And I know one of the things that we've talked about with staff as far as leveraging a lot of the talent that you have internally. Is that we'll work closely with staff for them to do some of the engagement as well to. To make sure that we're being mindful of of the project costs and things, so. Thank you.
Counselor Novak had something.
Yes, thank you. Again, this is why, when you say, how do we engage with people, we have people who've actually stepped up. They have filled out applications, they have agreed to attend meetings, they are our citizen advisory groups. And I, in my. Almost one year time have leaned heavily on them for their input, and I want that input restored where it's been removed. And I would like that, if we're gonna start fresh in January, I want input from the people who who. Signed up, who are willing, who have attended meetings, who have provided input. I want input from all these individuals on all these citizen advisory groups. These people, these people, they're a wide range of ages and backgrounds. And and they're there, and they do, they do contribute. I want them to be heard and part of this process.
So, so Counselor Novak, I would like to address that. People engage where they feel most comfortable. There's people on citizen advisory groups that don't feel comfortable about doing anything else but that group. So they're good to see and notice as everyone else, their level of engagement depends on their level, their interest in the topic. We can't force people to give us information.
Right.
So, so if people want to give input, they'll have those opportunities. We're gonna reach out to them, that's what she just said, we're gonna reach.
Okay, great, I just, I I just. I appreciate that, because I I I really value that input, and I'm I'm glad to know that those people serving on those. Groups, those citizen advisory groups will be given a voice in our discussions.
But you also have to keep in. You also have to keep in mind that not everyone's voice is gonna be heard because it, because things happen, people have lives. And so we can't get, we will not get a hundred percent of everybody's voice, because it's not possible. And anything that we do, whether it be, whether it be running a city or building a bridge, not everyone's gonna put input in.
I understand that, sir. I I wasn't putting parameters of any percentage, I am saying some percentage as opposed to being shut out. Which is something that we've experienced recently, I'm talking about an open door. All I'm talking about is an open door, sir.
Nobody's been shut out, Counselor Novak.
Well, when you tell a citizen advisory group that they're not to meet, that they're not necessary, that's a shutout in my estimation, sir, with all due respect.
So I think I've, I definitely have documented that we will include the. The citizen advisory groups and we'll put together an engagement strategy as we get. After we get through the goal setting process with the council. And you guys will have a chance to review that strategy and take a look at it before, before we get started and get rolling, so. I appreciate the input that's being shared here, and we'll make sure that those ideas get translated into that, and and you can double check it and make sure that it's all reflected there. As as part of the plan going forward, thank you.
Counselor Olson.
Yes, I'm. I think an example of a group that's been shut out. Is the care board. And they have, just all of a sudden, they've been shut out from our. Urban renewal process. And I disagree with that, and I would hope that we would hear from the. Combined care board before we leap into this. Riverfront project.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
All right, yes, I have added that, that piece of input to, to the goal, so. Any other thoughts on community engagement before, before we leave this topic? Again, this won't be the last opportunity to weigh in on this, but we wanted to at least start the conversation. Tonight to see if, you know, there, to gather the council's thoughts, so we can start building that strategy, engagement strategy and, and thinking forward about it. Okay. Well, wonderful, I think we have a good start as far as mapping out some goals for this strategic planning process, what the engagement's going to look like, and then thinking about how to manage. Through some of those challenges that you've identified, as well as leverage the opportunities that you've shared with us. The next thing I just want to talk about next steps briefly. As you, most of you have already scheduled your interviews to chat with me and. I sent out, for those of you who are scheduled this week, you've already received the questions. For those of you who are scheduled for next week, I'll send them right at the beginning of the week or on Friday, so that you have them towards the top of your inbox. So it doesn't get too buried. You don't have to. Put all of your responses together ahead of that, that call, we're doing those over Zoom. But if you want to, you certainly can, but it's really intended to be conversational, so that I can. Get a better understanding of where the council's priorities are, we'll be able to see kind of where some alignment, alignment might exist. And where maybe we might need to have some deeper conversations, where maybe there is an alignment, so that we can find that place of compromise. And and come up with a shared set of goals. So, looking forward to those conversations, this is part of probably the most important part of the work, because as I said, coming together for a full day. Is a big commitment, and we want to make sure that we make the most of that. So. This prep work, I just can't emphasize enough how much I appreciate you taking the time to do it, because that really. Helps us to see much better results. So. If you have any questions or concerns about the interviews, please let me know, please reach out. To myself or to Mary, Mary's been helping to coordinate that from the city staff side. And again, just looking forward to getting to know you better and and learning more about yourselves and your community, so. With that. Any other questions?
Counselor Kaptansky, I believe, has a question.
Just a comment for Ashley, when you and your family come down to Albany to see the carousel, if it's Thursday through Saturday, Thursday through Sunday. I'm there eleven to four, love to meet you.
Okay, I'll take note of that, so we can come down eleven through four, Thursday to Saturday. Okay, Thursday through Sunday, okay, great, thank you, we look forward to it.
Thank you very much for coming down. Is that it, Sarah and Ashley?
That is it, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time this evening and the great presentation. We all look forward to working with you and finding out more about what you do. And how you can help us progress forward and pay the. Look at the old plan and see if we can enhance it, move forward with the city of Albany. Okay, thank you very much, ladies, next on the council's business from the council, Counselor Kaptansky, you're first in my window.
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Johnson.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Counselor Olson.
Nothing.
Thank you, Counselor Novak.
Nothing, sir.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Yes, I'd like to let the council know that December fifteenth meeting conflicts with my. Daughter's band concert, so I won't be attending the December fifteenth meeting.
Thank you, noted, Counselor Smith.
Thank you, I apologize for being a few minutes late this evening, I was picking up my seventy-one pound dog. Who was spayed today, so we've got a few days of the cone at our house, it's gonna be a good time.
Wow. So, thanks for letting us know, I'm glad you made it, I'm glad your dog's okay. Tonight, all I have is, it's been a busy week for me. All of you know what I do for a living, so it's four AM to one AM every day for the next eight days. But if you need to reach out to me, please text me first and I'll get ahold of you, and he says, schedule a coffee or something. And also. Where we look at your, your list of people that are expiring in your citizen advisory groups, we have to get it done before recess for the, for the holiday break. So if you need any place to have your interviews, you can do it in my conference room here at the office, if not, good luck with you, if you have any questions or assistance, please let me know. Counselor Johnson.
Yeah, regarding that. I haven't seen a, a list of applicants, has anyone received that yet?
I received a list of people that are expiring, I think we all received that.
Yeah, I got that.
I haven't seen this, I I talked with Kenzie earlier today, she said that she'd be getting us something. I know she's collecting it.
Yeah, because the way. The way it worked last year really was nice, yes, thank you.
Yeah, we also, as, as the council need to do more outreach. This, I'll be doing something probably Friday with Kenzie or Matt, or depending on how it was gonna work out, but I'll be doing some as well. Counselor Smith.
I was just gonna say, I think the deadline for those applications is at the end of this week or the end of next week.
It's gonna be, it's coming up close.
Yeah.
So I'll be out beating the bushes as well for all of you. All right, thank you, I think I'm done, I'd like to speak, City Manager's gonna be up, just report.
Thank you, Mayor, I don't, I don't want to break the, the trend here, I have nothing to to add to extend the evening either.
You're killing me, okay. So I guess now we can adjourn the meeting, thank you all for attending this evening. I look forward to meeting with y'all at some point and having a cup of coffee. And hopefully a chance to have a break bread before the end of the calendar year for us. But thank you very much, have a great evening, I hope you all have a wonderful Thanksgiving.